And good morning to the public. Today is Tuesday, the eleventh of April, and it is now nine thirty AM. And I would like to acknowledge that the municipality of Jasper and the Jasper National Park and the municipality are on treaty six and treaty eight territories as well as Metis region four. This land is a traditional territory, meeting ground, gathering place, traveling route, and home of the Dene, Niha Awk, Anishinaabe, Sepwepik, Stony Dakota, and Metis. Councillors, um, meeting is called to order. Um, the first item on the agenda is, are there any additions to the agenda? Your worship.
I would make a motion, Deputy Mayor Melnick, that we add agenda item seven point six to today's agenda, that being committee appointments.
All right, thank you. Are there any other additions to the agenda?
Again, if I may, Deputy Mayor Melnick, if it fits with council, might be more difficult, given that we have two councillors attending remotely, but it could be useful to have an in-camera to finish our discussions about a letter to Parks Canada relating to my just planning and development, which we discussed in family last week.
Thank you for that, your worship, which would mean that in-camera session would become item eleven, and then item twelve would be adjourned.
All before eleven fifty-nine, we're open.
There any other additions or changes to the agenda? There being none, may I have a motion to approve the amended agenda, Councillor Wilson? All those in favor? And that's carried, and I'm sorry. Item or on the agenda? The March twenty-eighth committee, the whole minutes? Is there any business arising from the middle? Thank you, I believe those who approved at the last, um, regular council meeting. Number five is the next on the agenda. Are there any delegations for today? We have nobody in the room. Administration, we have nobody that will be online. Thank you. Moving to correspondence, item number six. Is there any correspondence to be added to the meeting? No correspondence, which brings us to item seven point one, community-wide internet access. And Director, Acting Chief Administrator Reed, I believe you're introducing this.
Uh, thank you very much, Deputy Mayor Melnick and through the council. Uh, Director Malancheck is busy with the audit right now, and so she's asked me to stick handle this whole item, not to introduce it, but she and I are on the same page on this item. So the item before you is community-wide internet access, and the recommendation is that committee direct administration to seek out and apply for opportunities for partnerships and or grants for small-scale, vulnerable population-specific internet access solutions. There are a range of alternatives. We believe that the recommendation meets uh, the spirit of where this item came from. However, if council has other ideas, we've offered uh, a variety of suggestions there, ranging in possible course. The background is at the August twenty-third, twenty-twenty-two committee meeting, committee directed administration to explore opportunities for townwide internet. And the motion following discussion from community conversations, April to June, uh, where it was detailed that the digital divide had become more prominent post-COVID. And pardon me. I don't know where this brought any. Um, and so, um, uh, the digital divide, um, those who have high access to high-speed internet and the skills to work those digital devices have fared notably, notably better. And further on, the pandemic and the Chedeman wildfire and power outage resulted in residents experiencing ongoing financial instability. And so, uh, you know, since that report, we know that doctors have experienced an increase in the cost of living and continued financial strain. And the most recent community conversations in March, it was noted that local businesses have reported a slower winter and early spring season, further contributing to financial instability. Uh, the lack of access to technology we are seeing in Jasper seems to be coming predominantly from an increase in household financial strain, therefore resulting in lower-income households opting out of paying for high-speed internet. Uh, being lower income is already a risk factor for vulnerability, and the subsequent lack of internet access then increases the conditions that further marginalize this group. Um, we can say anecdotally that the library is often a spot that residents and visitors let go, uh, sometimes just to access the robust Wi-Fi at that location, even outside. You, you, you may have seen this yourself, where there are people sitting on picnic tables just, uh, using their devices, even when the library is closed. So the discussion is quite detailed, as there are many possible solutions. If the municipality were to look at providing access to all residents and visitors in the central business district, uh, there would be capital costs and monthly costs, of course. Um, it, it would be quite an undertaking. Um, another solution would entail having additional and more robust or larger bandwidth public access points at our municipal facilities, uh, which would be advertised to hotspots to those needing access for free. This option would be the most conservative and effective solution the municipality could build uh, for community-wide free internet access, as it would minimize any infrastructure needed. It would just be um, a cheaper solution estimated at about a hundred thousand dollars, and it would require again an increase in our monthly costs. Um, in discussions with the IT manager for the municipality, uh, Director Malancheck indicated that in order for those to log into the Shawgo Wi-Fi solutions that we do have already, the users do have a process they have to go through, and there is limited uh, amount of time and bandwidth that they can access those hotspots for. And so those high-cost and high-access solution, um, administration is not recommending those at this time. The original start of this inquiry revolved around seeking a solution directly for the most vulnerable in our community, and we have found that there are low or no-cost opportunities to meet that specific need that administration recommends investigating, such as internet access, portable hotspots that could be signed out using a mechanism like the Library of Things. Um, I can speak to this directly. We were able to secure several of these from Telus, um, and they are available at the libraries in Yellowhead County. The strategic relevance, of course, community health, take proactive steps to reduce the risk of people becoming vulnerable and respond when they are, and communicate and engage with residents. Uh, the municipal inclusion assessment tool is applicable, uh, to this recommendation and was applied, but uh, due to the technical nature of this concept or this topic, or many times where we I, I still think we could do better on this one as an example, but there's a lot of technical drugging in this one. Um, the funding of an internet solution is not within the scope of the twenty twenty-three operating capital budget as approved, and with that summary, I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, Acting CEO Reed. Are there any questions for? Oh, councillor, sorry, councillor Wexler.
Good morning. Uh, thank you for that presentation. I actually was quite um, excited by the idea of the, uh, uh, portable hotspots that would be available through, uh, something like the Library of Things. But my only question, would it be, would there be significant enough um, ability to, uh, to provide, to watch a movie or to, for a child to watch a show um, uh, with this type of system?
Go ahead, uh, Acting CEO Reed.
Uh, thank you very much, councillor Wexler and Deputy Mayor, um, only through councillor Wexler. Council, the, uh, my experience with them personally is that, yes, they have that level of bandwidth, and, um, the key access point, uh, that made the difference was the ability to search for jobs, um, and, and have, uh, many tabs open while people were doing job searches. Um, and then they were also able to have their family take a relaxed time and, and do, yes, movies or gaming. Um, so yes, my experience is that they have enough bandwidth to accomplish that.
Thank you for that, because I, I think one a- aspect that I feel strongly about is, is leveling the playing field and providing opportunity for, um, lower-income families to, to enjoy the same things that other families enjoy.
Other councillors? Councillor.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Melnick, and I want to thank administration for your work on this. Um, this was a motion I think came out in August, and I, I support the recommendation, absolutely. Um, I know how difficult it is for our families and community that can't afford internet. There's the provincial government, uh, started the year, came out with that affordability action plan, six-six hundred dollar payment per, per family, child under eighteen, but you need to have an account, you need to log in, you need to create an account, you need to wait for a password, you need to go back on the internet, put that password in, so it's not as, um, accessible as one might think. Um, I can also speak to the library, and one of my last board meetings, there, I learned there was eighty-five thousand Wi-Fi visits last year, so it definitely is something that I believe is needed in this community, and yeah, I definitely sort of recommendation, and thank you very much for your work on this.
There, uh, Mayor.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Melnick. Through you to Director Reed. When I look at the alternatives, um, the third from the bottom, to bring a community-wide internet access solution to the twenty twenty-four budget presentations, what might that look like? Yeah, I do appreciate that the motion that was passed in August was bit loose. I'm not sure what it necessarily meant by community-wide internet access. The proposal for us today enhances accessibility for some, but it's a long way from community-wide internet access. So if you were to bring something back at budget, what might that look like? What like community-wide internet access?
Uh, Deputy Mayor Melnick, through your work and, and all of council, the, uh, the, what we would bring back in twenty twenty-four budget deliberations would be, in essence, a few options with costs. So it could look, you know, to use the analogy, it could be, uh, you know, a base model automobile, it could be the mid-range, or it could be the full luxury automobile. Uh, the same idea, we could have a solution that offered, uh, perhaps, you know, limited access in the CBD, all the way up to, you know, spreading Wi-Fi with a lot of bandwidth to, uh, you know, the majority of the community. Um, if council were to, were to direct us to do that, that's the level of thought we would put in at that time. We would bring you options that would have costs and value associated.
If I may continue. Can you tell me, um, making the correct assumption that I know nothing? Um, what are the current limitations, or, or is it built-in infrastructure by service providers, or is it, um, the hardware that individuals have that prevents some people from having reliable or sufficient access to internet right now? Wha- what is the fundamental call?
Um, thank you, Deputy Mayor Melnick, through your work and all of council. That is the question that we have endeavored to answer, and what we have found is that the actual impediment is affordability. The infrastructure in our community, those of us with, uh, connected devices, often full bars, uh, often there's no spinning wheel of waiting. Our community is, uh, fairly well-served for those who have access and can afford the technology. Um, to provide the system, uh, for free, say, in the CBD, there is infrastructure that is not there now. But, or, uh, the sort of, uh, those with enough, uh, those who can afford it, they have full access to a robust system from several different providers in our community.
All right, well, thank you for that, and I will, of course, accept that, but I, I do recall that when all of our meetings were remote, there were councillors in Calvin Creek who seemed to have more difficulty accessing our remote meetings, and I'm I'm guessing, perhaps, assuming that that was not necessarily an economic, um, factor. It was, something was wrong with the internet service that was available to them, but again, I, I can't speak for that, and I don't, I don't know what the challenges are in some parts of the community.
Acting CEO Reed.
I, I should, I should. I would add one other technical point, which is, uh, in general, I was speaking about the cell side of Wi-Fi. Um, our community is not served by fiber, for example, so, um, home internet access is limited to that, uh, peak, um, which I do understand is improving every year, even on copper lines. Uh, but you're, you're correct, Mr. Mayor, that we are not served by fiber to the home as many other communities in Alberta are.
Other councillor.
Thank you, just had one more question, and I can also speak to myself being in the um, West End, I phone tell us, and I would have needed to purchase a two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar in something, which I just didn't, because I figured we were going back in person soon enough. Um, in their foundation, uh, so seeking out opportunities for partnerships or grants, have you seen any of those come up, like, do grants just come across your desk? How to, I'm, like, I'm kind of assuming that it was COVID. You know, there's a lot of, I think a lot of things came to light, and i- is that something you've seen, or something that you think that would be a possibility?
Uh, thank you, Deputy Mayor Melnick, through the councillor hall, councillor. Uh, we believe that there are opportunities. We just have not pursued them yet, um, because of, uh, you know, competing demands and, and well, uh, I'll already identify priorities in our work plans, right, so. Uh, but yes, we believe there are some opportunities. Uh, several of the providers in our area have community-giving programs that we believe this type of initiative would apply to, or would be eligible for.
Thank you for that, councillor Wilson.
So for me, the municipality does offer public gas, access to internet, to, to a certain extent, um, to the vulnerable or not. And I just wanted to clarify, that's at the activity center, um, the library, and the outreach the building, the government building. Are individuals able to, that, do we have any type of, um, hardware uh, that, that individuals are able to, uh, use or access at this point? Um, thank you, Deputy Mayor Melnick, through the councillor Wilson. Uh, council, yes, uh, at the outreach office, there is the possibility of accessing, um, a workstation, uh, given, you know, certain conditions like working with the outreach worker. Um, also, you know, we should remember that there are other partners like G, uh, that does also offer some, uh, similar opportunities. Um, and the library, of course, uh, the location, but you are correct, we do offer, uh, free access Wi-Fi at our facilities. The limitation is, and that's one of the options, is we could improve our own bandwidth and our own hardware at our facilities. Uh, for example, when there is a tournament on, um, the bandwidth is overrun at the, at the arena activity center. And there are, of course, dead spots at the far end of the arena, for example, that we do not have the hardware for. Um, but, but you're correct, councillor, councillor.
Thank you for that. Um, anything further? Councillor Demoto.
Thank you very much, Deputy Mayor. Um, just a few comments. Um, you know, I, I noticed, uh, some of the, um, strategic relevance that were, was referenced in the document, which I really appreciate. But, uh, you know, there's another opportunity here, uh, you know, I think under the, the fourth bullet, under advocacy, and that's to pursue the acquisition of tools and authorities to enhance service delivery, uh, equity and affordability, and, you know, I'm, I'm kind of mirroring off of what, uh, the mayor stated, and I think there's, there's some other challenges, and, and we could couple some of that with, with some advocacy to the service providers, to our community, to, to, you know, uh, equitably distribute, um, internet access throughout the community. The other thing that, uh, I wanted to go, um, talk about here in regards to the, the actual Wi-Fi, um, I'm just wondering if there's an opportunity to look at where we can, uh, set up hotspots, uh, where essential power, where the essential power grids are in the community when we have startups and and, uh, because I noticed that during our extended power outages, uh, some people were complaining that their data plans were running out because they had no access to Wi-Fi, and that comes at an increased cost to people, and you know, that does have an affordability, um, connection to that, so. Um, those are some things that we can look at, you know, not just, you know, at the activity center or, or the library, but other areas in town where, you know, when we have the, the power startups to have that um, kind of link to our essential power. Um, the other thing that I heard through community conversations is, uh, from a vis- visitor perspective, that there are challenges uh, for visitors that, uh, don't have data plans on their phones that are visiting, uh, from international, uh, areas that, uh, are challenged with paid parking and, and other things like that, and, and accessing information on how to get around in the community. So I think there's, there's some trickle effects on, uh, you know, pursuing this, and if if we start with, you know, a, a lower-model vehicle, as, uh, Director Reed was talking about, with the ability to expand to where we needed to go, I think, um, I'd like to, to look at something, uh, that we can start with and then grow in the community. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Demoto. Um, I too believe that, that we should seek out other opportunities and, and the, uh, identifying the portable hotspot, I think, was a really viable first, maybe easy win for the opportunity to provide, um, internet throughout the community, but on a um, more limited basis. Um, I imagine there's parameters around the library of things as to how long, uh, the payments like that can be borrowed. Um, I do, I did notice in our new community guide that we've, um, identified on page eleven that we do have hotspots, um, in the areas that were mentioned, the library and the activity center, I think the aquatic center was also mentioned. And, um, I, I believe that, you know, the access to those areas at this point is quite good, if there could be other locations added at either end of town and, and the downtown core, I think that would be something else that would be great to seek out. Uh, because right now our hotspots are, are pretty well centralized in the downtown core. Uh, those being my comments, I, I don't know if there's any other comments from councillors. There being none, then I will seek a recommendation, um, from the committee to, uh, direct administration. Uh, is there anyone willing to make that motion? Councillor. Councillor.
I would make that motion that committee direct administration to seek out and apply for opportunities for partnerships and/or grants for small-scale, vulnerable population specific internet access, access solutions.
Thank you, councillor. Any further discussion on the motion? There being none, a question, all those in favor? And that's carried.
Before we, uh, go forward, I have, uh, if I may. Well, I'm just, uh, I'm just wondering, um, now that we've made that motion, if there's still the possibility to include, uh, something else, you know, for the mayor red, made reference to, um, to bring the community-wide internet access solution to the twenty-two, twenty-four budget presentations. Now, just because we've, uh, you know, made a, a recommendation to council, um, to, to seek grants and, and come back with solutions, should we be, maybe discussing a, a broader look? And having, um, uh, maybe an, an enhanced product, uh, for twenty twenty-four as well? Or would that include, uh, what we just motioned? Just throwing it out there.
Thank you, councillor Demoto. I think the way the motion reads, I'm interpreting it to be more limited than what the item you had identified and, um, that Mayor Ireland brought to the table. Uh, we can always, uh, include a second motion before we move on to item two-point, seven-point-two, pardon me, uh, which would give administration um, an expectation of, of preparation for twenty twenty-four budget. Um, any comments from administration, Acting CEO Reed?
Uh, Deputy Mayor Melnick, I, I think you nailed it on the head. If council wishes to see more work on this file, uh, any clarity to help us direct that work would be, uh, very much appreciated.
Thank you. So it would mean we would be looking for a second motion, um, directing administration to investigate a company-wide internet, sorry, community-wide internet access solution to be included in the twenty twenty-four budget presentations. And then councillor would make that motion? Councillor Demoto.
Well, as long as I'm not stealing the, the mayor's thunder there, I, I just, uh, I thought that would be a good idea to um, at least have the opportunity to look what, to have a discussion on what a, an enhanced product could look for the community and, and help out residents, um, and visitors, um, com- um, at large.
Mayor.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Through you to councillor Demoto, um, you would not be stealing any thunder. I, I asked the question intentionally, um, but the response that I received from Director Reed um, persuaded me not to make that motion. Um, I had also thought about the first alternative um, to seek more public engagement about what the public thinks we ought to be doing with internet access. But I'm persuaded personally that that can be an organic matter, and this is a public issue now. If the public wants us to engage, then we can certainly be responsive. Um, as I understood the response to my question, oh, community-wide internet access, whatever that might mean, is going to come with a significant cost, and the research itself is going to be costly in terms of staff time. Um, I was persuaded by the response from Director Reed that administration has already considered these things. They've come forward with a more limited, um, recommendation, and I accept that recommendation. Deputy Mayor Melnick said, um, it's a good first step, and we'll see where it goes, and, um, if it produces results, that's great. There is still a need, and we can always come back to this. We're a long way from budget right now, but I was persuaded not to make the motion, but you're certainly welcome to make it or any other motions that you like.
Thank you for that. I, I'll stand down. I just thought, uh, you know, just, um, work on some consensus building here. If that was the case, I thought it was an interesting idea, so I thought I'd pursue it, and I'm, uh, I'm satisfied with your comments, and, uh, that makes sense to me as well. Okay, thanks.
Thank you, councillor Wilson and Mayor Ireland, and I think we're ready to move on to item seven point two, uh, senior recreation facility passes. And, uh, Acting Director Reed, it looks like this is, uh, on your plate again.
Indeed, thank you very much, uh, Deputy Mayor Melnick and all of council. So the item before you is, in fact, the senior recreation facility passes, and the recommendation is committee recommend council approve, granting three annual all-access passes to all passes to all resident seniors seventy-five plus to begin June one twenty-twenty-three and continue annually thereafter. And there are a few alternatives. You could grant specific terms and specific types. You, I I should be clear that at the seniors' community conversation was brought to my attention that starting in June to coincide with seniors' week is an unnecessary delay. And so council could also change that recommendation if they felt that June was waiting too long. We can start this within a matter of of seven to ten days, just to get our administration side ready. But anyway, alternatives, administration is suggesting that council could choose the length and time and type of passes, or council could choose to bring it to twenty-twenty-four, or council or committee, rather, could receive this report for information and in essence not in increase our free pass programs, those seventy-five and older. So back on February twenty-eighth of twenty-twenty-three, Mayor and Council directed administration to bring forward a report providing options granting free passes to seniors seventy-five and older to begin in twenty-twenty-three. There there are two-hundred-and-twenty-five residents in this age cohort in our community according to the twenty-twenty-one federal census. And the discussion is, of course, the use of our recreation facilities can enhance both the physical and mental health of users. Providing increased access to this demographic would also enable more community connection and diversity. Currently, we have thirteen active facility memberships amongst this population. And so that total revenue of forty-five-hundred dollars, forty-five-hundred-and-eighty dollars, and these current memberships are all scheduled to expire within the next year. Should council elect to start this program in twenty-twenty-three, there would be refunds to those existing pass holders of approximately thirty-five-hundred dollars. Our program, our booking program can do this. We do it already for the children and youth passes. I mentioned about membership pass terms and membership pass types. Data collected suggests that many seniors do not access the facilities during the summer months and often again for a few months in the winter. So allowing a senior resident to choose a three- or six-month could create a situation where seniors are actively choosing the right term for their own use. And it may also enable more precise data collection. The program could launch in celebration of seniors' week, June five to eleven. We would, of course, advertise and promote through our website, social media accounts, and I should have mentioned onsite at our facility. Plenty of access or plenty of connection to the strategic priorities council has laid out several bullets under community health, several or one under relationships and organizational excellence. The municipal inclusion assessment tool has been applied, and there is, of course, a connection to creating more opportunities for each cohort to participate together. That's a recognized inclusion goal. The approved twenty-twenty-three budget does not include the necessary reductions in revenue to accommodate this request. Based on the previous year's data, providing seniors with free access, this June would result in approximately five thousand in lower pass revenue and perhaps four or five hundred in lower drop-in revenue. And then in future years, administration would present path revenue budgets incorporating this reduction of approximately seven-thousand dollars and five hundred in lower drop-in revenue. This represents less than a three percent reduction in total membership and drop in revenue. And we've attached again that letter from the senior society. And I'm open to any questions, Counselor.
Counselor Wilson?
A couple of questions. Currently, our seniors discounted from a regular adult rate.
Yes, seniors' rates are, I want to say the number is thirty percent, but I I wouldn't. That is a memory estimate. It may be a slightly different figure, but yes, seniors' memberships are already discounted from the adult membership price.
And if there were a vulnerable senior, senior, are there options for vulnerable seniors to access even more of a discount or free pass?
That's correct.
In essence, if it's financially necessary or financially, I I, as seniors unable financially to pay for a pass, our municipality already has avenues for them to access those passes.
Yes, and my apologies, Deputy Mayor Melnick, through to Counselor Wilson. I skipped that step on that last answer. I was a little excited, I suppose. But that is correct, Counselor Wilson. All of what you said is absolutely factual. We have, if, well, senior, but any member of our community is working with an outreach worker, then they are able to access the community outreach passes that we do have. And that program is income-tested and need assessed. And so, yes, any any senior that met a threshold of affordability would be eligible to access that program.
Great, thank you, Counselor Hall.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor, along the lines of Counselor Wilson's question. Are there any seniors accessing passes right now through our, what you just said?
Deputy Mayor Melnick, through to Counselor Hall, yes, there are.
Other questions, Counselor Demoto?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Through you, I guess my question would be to Director Reed. Right now, for the for this fiscal year, if we go in the direction of waiving the passes, that could mean something up to fifty-five-hundred dollars, fifty-four-hundred dollars if you include, sorry, the the drop-ins and with the potential of seven-thousand-dollar reduction. So in the future, so I'm thinking, does that mean we would be losing revenue by more people accessing it in the future?
Acting CEO Reed, oh, we got one for you to field.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Melnick, through to Counselor Demoto. If if you mean that we will have less revenue and higher attendance, yes, that I anecdotally, I would say yes, based on the success of the recent partnership with Alberta Health Services through the FIZIO. You know, we had sixteen seniors, some of which were at this age threshold or close. And they have, after that program, there's been a real uptake or a continuation of that. And we have a waiting list for a new program of seniors to do exactly the second intake of that. So we believe the demand is there and we would have higher usage based on these connected anecdotes. However, yeah, the revenue will go down and we believe we would have higher attendance. Is that the question you were asking, Counselor Demoto?
I guess so. I just, to me, it's just, we would be losing five-thousand dollars now. And and if we're going to, you know, attract people to come and use our programs by providing free passes, then I think, you know, it's to promote, you know, overall health, especially with within the the senior community in Jasper. And I think I just, I don't want to work with a false economy there, saying that if we got more people out, we'd be losing more. And I and I kind of want to work away from that. And I hope that's not the intention there. For me, it's it's more about accessibility and getting people out to be healthy, to be healthier. So I think that's the direction I'm going. So, you know, when you see the the fluctuation in numbers, that loss of potential revenue because we have more access doesn't really mean much to me. It's it's more about getting people act active and staying active in in town.
Thank you, Counselor Demoto. Counselor Waxer?
Deputy Mayor Melnick, through you to Director Reed, could you please explain how the system offered through outreach works? I was, I'm unsure if the passes are purchased through through fundraised dollars or if they're provided to the outreach system through the through the municipality.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Melnick, through to Counselor Waxer. That's actually a really good question. I kind of wish I would have put it in there more specifically. The passes, per se, are not purchased. They are created as the need is. So there's no money changing hands from any fund or from any budget line item. When we have the need, we create the pass to meet that need. And so the outreach passes are not any source of revenue or expense. Does that make sense?
Yes. Yes, that's that's a perfect answer. I was unsure if perhaps it was they were purchased through the caring community fund.
Counselor Demoto?
Well, if that's the case, the way I understand the way Director Reed described that service, then we already, we're already offering this program essentially to everyone. We just go with the demand, right?
Acting CEO Reed?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Melnick, and through to council and and Counselor Demoto. Yes and no. We do have a free access pass program for those that meet the need threshold. So there is, you know, you wouldn't be working with an outreach worker and be seventy-seven years old and automatically have access to that outreach program. That outreach program is specifically for those who are vulnerable or have needs. So you are not offering it. It is very unlikely that those who purchase passes would be eligible for that program. So it's not the same. It is a similar rollout or a similar function, I guess, system, but it's only for those who have the recognized need.
Okay, so I'm going to go back to Counselor Demoto and Counselor Waxer.
Well, as Janet Barker once said in the past, pilot projects are for the birds, and you've heard me reuse that a few times. You know, I'd I'd rather see us try something out. And I know that once you start giving something away, it's hard to take it back. But for me, I'm interested to see what the uptick would be in participation. So whether we have a pilot project or not, I think it's worth testing out. We have requests from the community here. I think it's a good idea. I don't think it comes with a huge financial impact to the community overall. And to me, it's promoting community health. So I I'd like to at least go in that direction. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Wilson. Sorry, Counselor Demoto, Counselor Waxer?
While the current program really addresses the vulnerability aspect, it doesn't address the final point in the letter from the senior society that of the the desire for a gesture of appreciation for the many years seniors have served their community. So I just wanted to point out that that aspect is missing from the just serving the vulnerability part.
Thank you, Counselor Waxer. Any other comments on councils? I would just, I would just echo my opinion of support for this program based on the conversation that we've had. There being no other discussion. Counselor?
I'll wait and speak to the motion. Pursuing the motion.
Assuming the motion, perfect. So that would, the next part of where we're going is that we'd be looking for a recommendation from committee or a motion from committee either to follow the recommendation or to an alternative to the motion that's recommended. And I see, Counselor Waxer, your hand is up.
I'm happy to make the motion that committee recommend council approve granting free annual all-access passes to all resident seniors seventy-five plus to begin by June one twenty-twenty-three and continue continue annually thereafter. And I would just add additionally as a comment that I like the idea of launching in seniors' week.
Thank you, Counselor Waxer. Any comments on the motion? Your worship?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Melnick. And while I am generally aligned with the recommendation, I think this issue points to a procedural limitation that we have here. And this is one in particular, a motion where, when it comes to council, I would much prefer to see a number of preamble clauses that set out the principles on which we are making this decision. So we had a very specific request to grant free passes to seniors seventy-five plus. Almost no one identifies seniors as seventy-five plus. So why shouldn't it be seventy or the more common age sixty-five? Or we allow seniors in our senior society at fifty-five? So there is a request before us for something really specific, but unless we nail down the principles which drive us, I think we leave future councils wondering. So once upon a time, we had a policy that school-age children, elementary school age, would get free swim passes. And then we augmented that. And now I think up to grade twelve get free swim passes. We never really dealt with the principles that drive the decision, but they could be incorporated, I think, into the motion itself. And maybe that's a way we should go with motion because all the record will show is the bare motion. And if another council has to review this or is requested to reduce the age to sixty-five, five years out, they'll come back and they will have no guidance from us about what drove us to this decision. So again, while I am prepared in these circumstances to support the motion, which is a recommendation to council, when it comes back to council, I think it would be a much improved motion if we set out the principles which guide us. And I am, I am concerned about why seventy-five? I mean, that was the request, but to the extent that the background indicates that the use of our recreation facilities can enhance both the physical and mental health of users, that applies to every demographic in this town. And so if it's just a show of appreciation for seniors, that's fine, but let's say that because there is not a demographic in this town that wouldn't benefit from more activity. So those are my comments. I I will support the recommendation, but when it comes to council by way of motion, I would like to see more principles in it.
Your worship, any comments from other counselors? Counselor Hall?
I wonder if we just took the word seniors out of the motion, any resident seventy-five plus. I, when this letter came to us, I reached out to Camar Downland. And Camar, they do offer programs similar, but it's eighty-plus. Maybe if we just took the word seniors out, it's a bit more specific.
I'm sensing that would be a friendly amendment to Counselor Waxer?
I would happily accept that friendly amendment.
Okay, other comments on the motion, Counselor Demoto?
I understand where the mayor's coming from, and I'm comfortable with with the amendment, and I could support this motion as is. And I I look forward to further discussion if we need to direct administration to come back with more information for the reasoning behind, you know, seventy-five. And I don't know if the the letter itself really describes what what the the actual need is there or the reasoning behind it. But if we need more information, I think the more that we have to support, you know, any future council for future decisions and just have some background there, the more the the more info we have, the more helpful it will be. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor Demoto. Counselor Wilson?
I'm tentatively supportive of the motion. I'm, I'm very I'm challenged because I I don't want to continually diminish our potential revenues in recreation. In past council, I was a part of extending the free passes from, I think it was twelve to eighteen. In my mind, I think what would put me in favor of that motion was that children have not really had the ability to
Put me in favor of that motion was that children of have not really had the ability to. Earn, earn wages to pay for services such as recreation. I think it's such a crucial and beneficial thing for them to have the access to the. Direct services and also adults are already very heavily burdened by, by all of life's costs and. To alleviate, you know, the, the, the challenge of paying for a child, a child's pass to access recreation is. You know, I think that was a really good move. I feel that, you know, if we were gonna go along the lines of Mayor Ireland's kind of suggestion of sixty five, not to say he suggested that, but. The, the, this demographic has had a whole lifetime of earning potential. They, many of them. Own their own houses, many of them have, you know, have had the benefit of. A life of earning and for us to start carving off that potential revenue for the municipalities is, is concerning to me. I think if we're staying above seventy five, well, I think I can get behind that, but I really don't want to see it continually. Carve out other demographics in our community. Because there's always, you know, a great argument about, you know, as Mayor Ireland said, it would benefit all. Demographics of our, or all ages of our community and but we can offer it free to, to everyone. There should be some parameters that suggest. You know, the vulnerable, the, the individuals that, you know, they're just can't support it. Well, I really support that. And that's why I feel that. We are already doing this for the people that do need it and. You know, yes, it's a good nod and gesture to the seventy five plus, but is it really necessary? I'm not quite sure.
Thank you, Counsel Wilson. Any other comments? I, I just would make the observation we remove. The word seniors and we've said residents. It is interesting that, that we're making the assumption that. Someone that, that this was intended to show appreciation for. The many years that residents have served their community, but it is possible. That people can become residents in this community at age sixty five. Received this benefit. When they maybe haven't given many years of service to the community, so we, you know, when we're looking at parameters and how we're phrasing things. I think we need to understand maybe the spirit of what we're trying to do. Um, but understanding that, you know, there is going to be. Or there could be situations where people will receive a benefit where maybe the spirit wasn't intended. Any other comments at all? There being none, I would like to. Counsel Demora.
Well, if you're inviting more comments, I don't mean to speak out of turn here. But you know, there, there are some compelling arguments and yeah, some people have had the opportunity to, you know. Gain some in. Gain some financial freedom and stuff in, in their retirement and, you know, somebody that moves here when they're sixty five, they could be somebody's parent. Yes, they can. You know, some people do work or have to work if they want to stay here in the community to, to seventy years old and. You know, if they get to, to at least contribute to the community or however long they've been here. You know, research has shown that a lot of our volunteers in our community come from, you know, a certain demographic and sometimes those people that are retired. Uh, when people get, when some people get seventy five plus, their, their fixed income becomes marginally smaller compared to what. Uh, the cost of living is in our community. So we have to consider all those things as well. And yes, we do have programs for that. Um, is this a blanket solution? Maybe, maybe not, but I think for me. Uh, again, I, I, I know I've already said it, but, uh, you know, I appreciate the arguments of, of people having. Uh, affordability in the community. I, I'd like to see it promote more active engagement and, and keep our seniors. Uh, access to, to being more healthy in the community. Thanks.
Thank you, Counsel Demora. Okay, I won't be using a. A statement that I know Counsel Demora would be using right now, but. I would like to call the question, all those in favor of the motion? And that's very unanimous. Uh, Mayor Ireland.
Just before we leave the subject entirely. Deputy Mayor Melnick. I wonder whether there might be consensus on council. To request administration if they're able for next week's discussion when this comes back to council. So let us know whether statistically. The demographic of seventy five plus. Year olds. Is growing or diminishing in jester? So there's a reference in the background that the twenty twenty one federal census showed. Two hundred and twenty five residents age seventy five or, or above. It would be interesting, I think, at least for me to know. How that compares to previous census and whether that demographic is increasing or increase. So if, if in the absence of objection from counselors, I, I think that could be. An additional direction to administration to just favor us with that information if they're able next week.
And looking to administration, the C E acting CEO read, we're good with that request.
Absolutely Deputy Mayor Melnick and through your worship, we, we can accomplish that for sure.
Thank you very much. Moving on then to item seven point three, council delegation to Hakoni and in twenty twenty three. I'm going to assume that. Director Nodan will be presenting this or is this acting CEO reading?
I can certainly hand the baton to Director Nate Don. She has all the information. Thank you.
Thank you, acting CEO Reed, Mayor Council. Thank you. This item is back in front of council following a motion at a previous committee of the whole that directed administration to. Find more information on timelines, costs and delegation size for a trip to Hakoni before committee would consider any further steps. So. Coordinator Acorn has compiled a lot of information and worked with a travel agency to. Try to pin down some of the cost estimates as well as working with our counterparts in Hakoni to determine the delegation size. As you can see in the report, a delegation of approximately ten delegates is what is expected from. The Hakoni team and that could be a bit more, a bit less, but also it is important to note that group rates for travel are usually based on ten individuals or more. So that group of ten is kind of a key number to keep in mind and. Our understanding is there is a limited ability to accommodate more, a, a few more maybe, but not too many more. And based on information from the previous delegations, based on information from the travel agents, we came up with the. Uh, attached itinerary, which is by all means a draft, but is meant to illustrate what flights might cost and transportation and. Accommodation and things like that. It also includes spending some time in Hakoni from November first to November fourth, which is when. The Hakoni Town Office has requested would be the best time to go and to align with a local event that has taken place during that time. And so you'll see under discussion that the package altogether. Is currently estimated at, as, at approximately five thousand seven hundred dollars. That does include flights. Um, and that is based on the availability and pricing that was current as of last week. So none of those numbers are guaranteed unless and until we actually book. Provide deposits and then that's when we know we can secure the rate or not. And just for information, for your consideration and your deliberations, if you were to want to add additional nights to the state. Um, so currently we're looking at six nights in Japan. Accommodation costs nightly are in the vicinity of four hundred to five hundred dollars a night. So each additional night would require approximately that amount. And then of course there's transportation and. Substance that might add to that. So I would suggest that this fifty seven hundred dollars. Is a very conservative estimate. Potential delegates could expect that it could increase a little more and. Unless and until we actually put deposits and book, book things, we don't really know that those prices are secure. Um, something else worth noting is that through our conversations with the Hakoni Town Office and through a travel agent is that. Japan is welcoming visitors again, but that is a relatively new thing. So following the COVID nineteen pandemic, they seem to have. To be a bit delayed in, in welcoming visitors. So most places around the world have started doing that a few years ago, but Japan is still in the process of. Opening up. So getting some information has been quite challenging, but we do have a good level of confidence in the travel agent we are working with and the proposed plan. And that is why this is back in front of council. And so for next step or the recommendation. Um, we are suggesting that committee direct administration to work on next steps to organize a twenty twenty three delegation, including a discussion with the hospitality and tweet communities committee. On how to determine who will take part in the, in the delegation. So that is an internal committee to which Mayor Ireland and Counselor Waxer are currently appointed. Um, so how would we narrow down or start confirming who would be part of that ten delegates? And that is assuming, of course, that council wants to pursue the initiative and actually go to Hakoni this fall. So I, getting this information in front of you is to help you determine. Whether to pursue this or not. And there are alternatives listed to that effect. Council has not formally approved a delegation to Hakoni yet for twenty twenty three, but it has approved an operating budget. So the dollars are there and do not require. Um, any additional council decision. It's more a matter of procedurally whether you're happy to. Have committee direct administration if that's sufficient, but if you wish to have a more formal process, you could. Go along the lines of something like committee recommend council approve a delegation could be a more formal way to address this matter. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have. Thanks.
Thank you, Director Nodan. Are there questions for Director Nodan? Counsel Demora.
I don't have any questions for Director Nodan. I, first of all, I want to say that I, I really appreciate. The work that's been put into this and, you know, I, I'm always a fan of, you know, the. I'm not always a fan, but I should say in this case I'd be a fan of an RFP process where. It's great that we have a travel agent that gives us a quote on stuff and I'm not an expert traveler by any means. I, I have traveled a lot. In the past and this is nothing on administration and the people that put this together. I. I think that, you know, we didn't really give solid direction on what we wanted. Um, you know, as a group, I, I think that maybe extending a couple of days. Would be helpful. I, I found that, you know, even if I don't get to go on this one, I found that having some time in Kyoto. Uh, was really beneficial, not just from a visitor standpoint, but just, you know, just from a community standpoint and some of the, the things that they're doing there and. Um, I think if, if we're going over there, uh, you know, to, to land in Tokyo itself and then just go straight to Hakoni and back. Uh, might be a little limiting as far as the experience goes. I, I know that. Hotel costs are high from a peripheral view. It, it might be more expensive when your group be booking a group of ten, but. When I've gone to research and this is just me as an independent traveler looking at, at prices, it doesn't seem that high in Canadian dollars and. And maybe with taxes and all, everything in, it is five hundred dollars a night. I'm not gonna, to, to really question anyone here. On that, but I, I think that if, if we did a little bit more work and had a little bit more time and gave a little bit more direction. And, and maybe put this off to twenty twenty four. We have other opportunities to see what increases in and other revenues in the, in the community could be. To help alleviate some tax dollars going towards this initiative. I think with. Going to Toronto for FCM, some of us, it's, it's going to eat up quite a bit. And when you factor in the per diem for, per counselor, it could work out. You know, right now, the way it is twenty two hundred dollars per, per counselor is, is from their budget. So. Uh, that's just for Hakoni. Never mind what it might cost for us to go to Toronto on top of that. So lots of factors to consider. I, I'm sorry. For being long-winded on this, but I'm not really prepared to, to move forward with what's in front of us right now. And again, that's, that's no. That's, that's no reflection on administration's work. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Demora. Other comments?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Melnick. I think what's before us right now is a recommendation to do some more work. With administration in conjunction with. The hospitality and municipalities committee. And I find that to be quite appropriate. It's not a commitment at all. Um, and so I am in a position where I'm prepared to. Make a motion that committee direct administration to work. On next steps to organize a twenty twenty three. Delegation to Hakoni. Including development of a more robust itinerary. And including a discussion with the hospitality and community, communities committee on how to determine. Who will take part in the delegation. So I, I made that motion recognizing that there is work to be done and part of that work, I think, is. The development of. A more robust itinerary, the, the itinerary that it's just there as a place that really is just a draft. Um, and if we are going to go out to the community at some time. Um, and see whether there are community members interested in joining a delegation of a ghost. I think they deserve to know what the itinerary might look like. And so I think we have to spend some time on that, Counselor. Demora has been there and he's quite right that. Cost trips have included. An opportunity to view Kyoto, which is a wonderful opportunity, particularly if we're looking at trying to draw community members to. To augment our numbers and the free costs that it's an important consideration. And we have never had free time in Hakoni to my recollection. So there will have to be some adjustments, but we have to contact Hakoni to do that. So we have money in the budget. We haven't committed to spend any of it. We haven't committed who would go. We haven't committed that we will be going. But we do have a committee that is well suited to deal with this. And so. I make the motion and as a member of that committee, I'm quite prepared to. Dig a little deeper with administration on this and see if we can come back to council.
Thank you, worship. Are there any other comments? We have a motion on the floor. Counsel Demora.
Well, I know I brought this up at, at budget time and, you know, when we went through our whole checklist and priorities in. Reflection of our strategic plan and how a lot of our budget items were drawn off of that with strategic relevance. I understand the strategic. Relevance behind this, but this excursion did not hit anywhere on the radar as being important. Uh, to council when we were developing our, our strategic plan. Um, you know, and if it's become something that's, that's important, I just, I want to know where. The urgency for twenty twenty three came from, because I just, I'm still trying to reflect back on. All of a sudden it had to be this year.
Counsel Wilson.
I don't think anybody's saying it has to be this year. And I think Mayor Ireland had just suggested that that. It could be this year, but we have to move forward in more, more planning. If it's gonna be twenty twenty three or twenty twenty four or. Never, but there's, there's no harm or foul to direct administration to work on next steps.
Thank you, Counsel. Counsel Demora.
If that's the intention, then I can support that for sure. I think that's great. If, if it's that open, then I think we move forward. So. I'm easy to convince if, if I understand there's good sense behind it.
Thank you. Are there any other comments? Saying no hands, we have a motion on the floor. Call or question, all those in favor? And that's carried. That is now ten forty. I would like to see us take a ten minute break. And uh we'll reconvene at ten fifty AM. Hey, welcome back, everyone. It is ten fifty AM, and we are at agenda item. Seven point four, and I would like to relinquish the chair to the mayor so that I might um speak to this item.
Are you making a motion? Not making a motion, I'm just gonna speaker. You do not relinquish to speak.
All right. I've been corrected on a point of order, so I don't need to relinquish the chair, but um.
I mean, if you plan to make a motion, then yes, you must relinquish the chair. You're just gonna speak to an item? You need to. I'm happy to assume the chair.
What do we have? You assume the chair in that way if I um, I think at the end of my. Discussion, there may be a request of administration, which should be in the form of a motion.
Go ahead, Deputy Mayor Melnick.
Now we have that point of order. Thank you. Um, councillors have included a communicate which you may or may not have seen regarding. Um, our same policing, our CMP policing in the and the uh in the province and in the country and. Also absorbing retroactive costs. Now, we've seen in our budget that policing uh costs have gone up. And what I what I my intent was here to um have a discussion to. Present a position that uh we should um support the FCM. In their requested uh in the future local governments. Um, be consulted when items like this come up. But also, um, I think it's important for us to understand how this particular cost line is going to affect us this year and in future years. Uh, with that in mind, we don't have the numbers in front of us, and I was going to um suggest that. A motion I would probably make would be to direct administration or have administration. Put together a report of how these. Um, retroactive costs will affect the municipality of Jasper both this budget year and in future budget years. We don't have that information in front of us now, but we will of course be affected by this later this year and next year. And with that intent, um, I can put a motion on the floor. So that we might have discussion. So I would like to move the committee request. Administration to prepare a report. Which will itemize the effects of the cost of policing in twenty twenty three and twenty twenty four. As well as the cost of the retroactive um costs associated with the RCMP collective bargaining agreement.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Melnick for that motion, if I could make a friendly amendment um rather than committee request administration, I would suggest we direct them. With that small change, you're fine with that?
I'm happy with that.
The motion then is that committee direct administration to return with the report. Over any of the impacts of this decision. Um. Speaking to the motion, this became evident in the the federal budget on March twenty eighth that um. The retroactive pay which had been negotiated between the RCMP and the federal government um was negotiated with municipal money, but municipalities were not at the table, which has. Caused no end of consternation. Um, I think in fairness, because our community only started paying RCMP policing costs. Um, recently, the the exposure that we face is. Less than many of our neighbors, um but we need, we need to know the numbers, and I had made that request to. Um, our director of finance and administration at the end of March, but this is an exceedingly busy time for. For that particular department, um doing with the audit. Um, so that information will come and it will be directed to come as a consequence of this motion. The only thing that I would add is that. It would be most helpful if we can get this information before council. Um, perhaps early in May so that we can consider our position before um any of us attend um FCM, because there's there's going to be a reservation at. FCM for sure, and we we should be prepared um for that, but in all other respects, I I have nothing. To say that support for a motion from Deputy Mayor Melnick. Is there any other discussion on the motion? And have we lost councillor Waxer? Nope, there's yet. If there is no further discussion, I will call the question. All those in favor? There are none opposed. That is carrying. See the chair back. You've got the mayor now.
Thank you, worship, and that brings us to agenda item seven point five, and I will look to councillor Demoto.
Yeah, um, this is just an item that uh came back to committee uh from the legislative committee, and um I just wanted to. Bounce some some of this off you uh for council to to bring back. We we have another meeting this afternoon because. Ran out of time at our last meeting to to conclude our uh resolution um development, I guess, at uh. Alberta Municipality. So this one's uh addressing uh some rent uh control advocacy at the at the. Provincial level, and uh, you know, just doing some research. I've uh found that, you know, some economists will tell you that having rent control um causes a lot of challenges. It might, it might cause. Uh, ownership to to leave certain areas. It might cause some uh decreased values in property and and um. You know, I just, a a lot of those things are theories, and some people say that more housing will cause the market to to dictate itself and and. Uh, rents will come down and and sure, that might happen in theory in some places, but not everywhere. Uh, for for us here, I think the advocacy is for our community members and seeking other communities that might have similar plights. Um, I don't think that fighting for uh a numbered cap or percentage cap is the intention of council, but. Uh, to see some regulations where uh there isn't the freedom to increase rents. Uh, by forty percent, for an example, because that's just, to me, that's just an old tactic to to increase rents by ten or fifteen or more. Uh, so that forty doesn't seem as high. So uh, we've experienced that in our community where. Um, and agents or companies come out and said, this is what the new rent's gonna be. Then there's some lashback, and then they say, okay, well, it's not gonna be that high. I don't know what the new numbers are in some places, but I know that. Uh, there are other um areas where people are uh continually having their rents increase, and uh it's coming to my attention at least. I I'm not sure. Uh, if it's getting to other councillors, but I thought this would be uh some worth advocating. It's been addressed at um. Community conversations, and I think it's something that's it's um an important. Topic to address at higher levels because it's out of our jurisdiction, and I think that we should speak. Uh, for our renting members of the community here, and and I'm talking about more about residential dwelling. Um, I know that um the mayor had a a little bit more insight on, you know, what we should be advocating for and. Um, because he speaks a lot better than than I do on on these types of things. I'd like to lean on him to provide a little bit more. Insight on what he thinks we should be um advocating for at the Alberta municipalities level.
Thank you, councillor Demoto. Your worship?
Well, thank you, Deputy Mayor Melnick, and uh. I suppose thank you to uh councillor Demoto. Uh, there are three of us on the legislative. Committee, and we've grappled with what a motion might look like. Um, there are obviously. Countervailing um considerations. Um, we appreciate the concern raised in the community. With respect to affordability, but an equally challenging reality in our community is availability. And so we struggle at the committee level with. Trying to configure a motion that we could present to our municipal colleagues that might get support to go forward. As a lobbying position to the province, but one of the things that we don't want to do is negatively impact. The private sector from building more housing. And so there are a number of units under construction now, and there will be over the next four or five years for one major developer. And I presume that they have committed that capital expenditure on expectation of. Market rents that would be available, and it is such a challenge to figure out how we can. Continue to encourage the private sector to provide available housing for residents while at the same time protecting them against uh. The affordability issue for the properties that are now available. Um, I can't add more than than the council of motive. I mean, that is the challenge that we face, and the question is, to what extent? Um, will council be supportive of a motion and what sort of. Guidelines might council want to give the legislative committee as it grapples with trying to draft. An appropriate motion to take to our municipal colleagues when we meet in September.
Thank you, worship. Other councillors? Councillor Wilson?
Yeah, it's a challenging question for sure, and and to kind of give you guidance at this point, we just be kind of off the. Top of our our heads, but I I couldn't see getting behind a rent cap at this point, as he suggested, uh, it could cause uh. Snowball effects in other um avenues um with uh um housing development. Um, I, you know, in, I think in DC they have uh uh. Control where it suggests you can't increase uh certain percentage every uh every year. You know, I think we can get behind that. We're not setting any of this stuff. We're only advocating for it. So it's cut, it is kind of out of our control and, you know, um. Yeah, it's out of our, it's out of our controlling, as we can advocate for it at the at um Alberta municipalities, which is why it's in front of us, but uh. I think the provincial government should have a bit more of a a handle on 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 what they they could, you know, perceive or. Feasibly put forward. You know, is it our, is it, is us uh to set those parameters and. Right, I think, you know, sure, let's have the conversation, but uh I don't think I want to put any type of parameters uh behind it at this one.
Thank you, councillor Wilson. Councillor Demoto?
Yeah, and I appreciate that input, you know, um, just doing some reading. Um, recently, uh, the minister of uh social services, community and social services, uh. Mr. Nixon said that they're they're more focused on in increasing the supply. Of affordable housing to make sure that they have options for Albertans to address the increased rent prices. And, you know, I. I have to say that I'm I'm grateful that we were successful in getting some grants like we've, we just got six point five million to to go towards. Uh, an affordable housing project, but, you know, of affordable, we don't know what that means yet in our community as we get these. Uh, future developments rolling out. Um, you know, we've been asked, uh, I guess, directly and indirectly to to advocate. For uh some type of control in our in our community, and I just, I'm just kind of lost to. When we go to our higher levels, what that looks like, and I, you know, to just, I guess, reiterate what the the mayor said. Um, just looking for some help and direction from council on, you know, how we should pursue this, and maybe. One of the options uh is to team up with another community that might be working on this already. I know that there's a lot of movement in Calgary, and. If we can help somebody second that or support their uh their resolution at out Alberta municipalities, that could be part of of that. Type of act. Yeah, I'm not sure.
Thank you, councillor Demoto. Other comments, councillors? I am. Uh, hearing uh. The comments by lead minister Nixon um and understanding. Uh, developers do get into projects because of the possibility for return on investment. Um, however, you know, there is opportunities for perhaps our guidance towards. Uh, a possible uh municipal stand is that guidance could come in the form of a not to exceed. Uh, say the rate of inflation or the rate of inflation plus one, which then does allow some. Movement to cover ongoing costs. Um, but then again, that's looking for, if we're doing uh a recommendation to Alberta municipalities, finding another. Um, municipality that would be willing to either co-sponsor or second um our particular recommendation, so. Um, that would be my comment is that uh we may need to look at some sort of, well, not rent controls, but some sort of ceiling for annual increases. Your worship, or you were? Your worship?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Melnick. I I appreciate the comments and um the legislative committee will tackle this, and it's appropriate. That the discussion be held at that level. That's why um we have committees to to do this groundwork, but it is challenging and. The conversation today will help inform our decision staff, but that even the suggestion by Deputy Mayor. Melnick of limited increases, say based upon CPI may well forestall capital improvements, and in many cases in our community. Um, the standard of accommodation is already substandard. Um, if if owners are restricted in. The rents that they can apply, there is no incentive to make capital improvements either, and that is also not a service to our residents, so it it. It is very challenging, but it's a challenge specifically for legislative committee now, so we'll pick it up again this afternoon and. See whether we can configure something to go back to to council for further discussion and approval or not.
Thank you, worship. Um, councillor Demoto?
One thing that, you know, I haven't really heard that hasn't been discussed amongst economists and and people that make projections on economies. Is that, you know, if there are regulations or stricter uh regulations on what increases can be. Um, that might promote regular repair and maintenance for facilities, for housing facilities. Uh, instead of, you know, sometimes uh you see that things get put off until renovations have to happen, and then you have those big spikes. Um, in in rent increases for improvements and things like that, so this initiative like this might. Provide some consistency for upkeep so that those drastic changes don't have to come, and I think if there's responsible uh ownership. Then um you wouldn't see those types of major fluctuations, and of course, costs go up sometimes more than CPI, but there's gotta be a reasonable. Uh, ground somewhere to help people uh that. Not become vulnerable. And I think that's kind of where we're at on that on that fine line between being vulnerable already and then putting people out in uh. In vulnerabilities where they weren't anticipating to be. So again, for broader discussion, but lots to to think about.
Thank you, councillor Demoto. Any other comments before we move on to the next item? Not seeing any hands. The, we'll leave that for the legislative committee to continue to carry forward. At item seven point six, committee appointments. Your worship.
Thank you again, Deputy Mayor Melnick. I added this matter appointments or reappointments to boards and committees has been discussed over the past month or so. It's languished a little bit. Just waiting for some certainty about what committees we have. I have recently circulated to counselors and to Ms. Acorn a draft of what I would propose as a new assignments. There aren't a lot of changes, but there are some. Counselor Waxter was denied two appointments with the shift in community conversations. And I think who had environment? Is that Council Demota? In any event, I, I dealt to the extent we could with the change in the structure and added the Jasper Community Team Society, which is new deleted those community conversations and amalgamated one where there were formerly two appointments that we don't know the one I think it's adults and who got combined, now.
Early childhood school age.
Right. Yes. Oh, so that is down now. Early childhood and school age is only one? No.
Yeah.
Go ahead. Director Reed.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Melnick, through to your worship and all of council. That is a, almost a test right now to see if the attendants and the attendees, the participants in those two community conversations are enjoying sharing that time. We are not proposing that they are the same conversation at, not yet.
All right. So I, my draft still includes an appointment and an ultimate for each of those. So to the extent they may become combined, then we can, we can look at that. And the new format also eliminates communities in Bloom, which was determined at a recent meeting, which I was absent, but I read the minutes. Well, I wasn't entirely absent. I was recused. In any event, if there are no changes required to be made, I would recommend that committee I would move that committee recommend council approve the new circulated list of council plans to boards and committees. And rather than read it all, Ms. Acorn, can you confirm that you've got a copy? So you know what the motion is about. Thank you.
Thank you, your worship. Any questions or comments on the motion? Or the recommendation? And when this comes to council next week, we'll have the full chart attached to the motion. All right. I see no hands up for conversation. All those in favor? And that is carried. Brings, brings us to the motion action list. And Acting CEO Reed and we have a few lineup dates, I believe, in here.
Thank you very much, Deputy Mayor Melnick and through to council. So we have gone out on a bit of a limb with our esteemed C A O on vacation. We thought that we would try a test run with you. You'll see we've added a column here that basically at the last committee, the whole council indicated that it would be helpful to understand where administration feels the item is or would recommend the item might get slipped to. So we have created a new column called status. And so you will see, for example, well, the first item, community conversation town internet access, we covered today. So that one with council's approval would get knocked off. Fruit trees on municipal property was supposed to come April twenty twenty three, but is in progress and is not yet ready to be delivered in April. So we are proposing May. Does this, as an example of how we might provide you with the information you need to work through motion action list that this appear to give you any assistance?
Counselors, any comments? I love serving your worship. I was just going to say, you know, an addition like this does help when reading the minutes to see where things are in the pipeline coming back to us. And also if there will be changes, which then allows us to, you know, perhaps bring that up at a, at a committee hall meeting. But I would be saying, I would say this is a good addition to the motion action list. Your worship.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Now, my only concern, and I express this on behalf of administration. My apologies. I address this to administration, but it concern, I think from your perspective, more than than my perspective as a counselor. But if you take the third item, for example, provision of services to private leaseholders at no cost, there is in the council motion a specific direction to come back in April. And so I don't see how status can just say May. I mean, I, I appreciate that there is a reason that it should be May, not April. But it, it's a request for status change, I think, rather than an indication of status. So I'm not quite sure how to work through that little issue, but I don't want administration to be offside a motion and a council has directed something to be returned in April. And it can't be, then there should be a discussion about that rather than just an indication on the motion action list that April is no longer mine.
I'll go to Acting CEO Reed and then to Counselor Wilson.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Melnick, through to your worship and all of council. So that is excellent feedback. And what we are hoping to have is, is that exact kind of feedback from committee so that we could get this closer to what might be helpful. We do also, when we say status, that's in essence, when we believe we will have the capacity to deliver it properly. Council, of course, and the one you highlighted, Mr. Mayor, is absolutely correct. Council can say, sorry, we don't accept me. And, and then we would change our priorities or change our work plan to accomplish that. What we're, what we're attempting to do here is to say, this is when we believe that we will have the capacity to properly administer, properly deliver on council's request. Council can still and, and is, of course, this is your, your, these are your motions. So you could say, no, we have to stick to April. And I think in this case, you know, when you pass the motion action list with the new dates in it, my understanding is that would allow for, you know, you have made a motion that changed the date on that item. I, I would defer, of course, to your recommendation there, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, I, I think Director Reed, gonna follow it up. I was probably gonna say, and, and that's, I guess that's the conversation's happening right now. So yeah, they may be offside in their, what they're suggesting the, the date be. And then we could say, no, no, it has, it needs to be in April. Some of these are, can't be in April because we're already mid-May. So if it was, if you're, if you're going to push it to another month, well, I think that has to be at the start of that month. So gives us opportunity to say, no, we had it in April and we want to see it in April. Rearrange your priorities to make that happen because we can't even say that no, I want to see the clean energy program in April because it already been pushed to May, but we don't even have a meeting to make it happen. Or, you know, we really don't have a meeting to cram it all in because it's already halfway through. This is the first time we've seen it, right? So if, if it was going to be pushed to May, I think that that would, should happen at maybe the end of the, of say, March or the start of April rather than at the middle of April. But
I'm sorry, Acting CEO Reed.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Melnick, through to council. I understand totally what you're saying, that you want to have enough time to be able to say, ah, no, or, or yes, right? And yes, so this status update is basically, you know, we spoke last week, could we accomplish all this so that we could provide for this agenda? And there, there is still another committee meeting this month. So we, we did feel like you could still say, no, you could still say, no, it has to come in April, and then we would make it happen for the next committee.
Yeah, but also you don't want to be rushing that item, right? So like, okay, so if we say we want to see it in two weeks, well, maybe it needs more than two weeks to make that, all that work happen, right? So I guess all I'm saying is a lo- a longer heads up than two weeks would be probably more ideal just because we don't want the work rush either. We want the work, you know, done properly and not, you know, put to us prematurely. And I, I know the reason why it's then get pushed to May. Well, because we want to do the work and not have to us prematurely. But the longer of a notice you can kind of give us, I think, is the, the better. All I'm saying.
So Acting CEO Reed and then Counselor Hall.
Thank you very much, Deputy Mayor Melnick. And, and I will say that point is well made and, and really appreciated on the side of administration. Thank you very much for that consideration. And so the item above that fruit trees on municipal property, we're waiting for one of the other parties in that discussion to, you know, get the work done. So it's a bit that we don't really have any option on that one. This one, this third one, has it in the motion that it says it will come back in April. And so I can absolutely see why this one is problematic. And I think that message is also well heard for administration. We will be more, I think, attuned to how important that is. So I think your, your point is really, really important and I appreciate it. And we are listening.
Thank you, Counselor Hall.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I also wonder too if I, I know administration has heard from us just a desire for less loaded meetings. You see a lot of Aprils here, and I know that it's I wonder if that's sometimes things that move because we don't want to have ten things on our committee meetings to keep us parlayed, or is it? I wonder that.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Melnick, through to Counselor Hall. Yes, we are aware of balancing as one of our priorities. This is, the status is, is far more of a workload related information that we are delivering to you. And so for item three, if, if council wishes to see that item, or really any item maintained in April, there is the capacity to do that. It will mean that something else will be prioritized lower. And so what we're trying to show you is, this is how we would prioritize it. You, you guys, you, you counselors rather, have, of course, your own priority list that, again, this is your make motion action list that we want to hear from you. Whether or not we got it right, we will not be in any way offended. We are telling you, this is what we believe is the best plan of attack from our side of the table. Then you add your side of the table and, and then we will absolutely adapt, improvise and overcome.
Okay. Your worship.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Now, I enjoy these sorts of discussions. In the absence of any other direction, and it I picked the one I picked because it's the only one on the list where council said bring this back, first committee of the whole meeting in April. We said that back in November, having no idea what April was going to look like. I I don't know why we chose to say the first week of April or the first committee of the whole meeting in April. But we did. And that is a clear direction from council. We might want to consider when we specify dates, but it has to be meaningful if we do. And so today, for example, the question about retroactive R C M P costs, we need that information next month. So that might require something else gets moved down. More generally though, from administration's perspective, is there any attitude of first in, first out? Or is it just the most recent thing gets the attention and the thing that's been sitting there since last August? Doesn't. And I, I'm not picking on the fruit trees, but it there are different ways to manage inflow and first in, first out is a pretty common technique. But it doesn't seem to be necessarily the, the driver here. So what is, what is the view of administration? If there is no specific direction from council, what item takes precedent?
Deputy Mayor Melnick, through your worship and all of council, I can tell you from our discussions at S L T that the balancing of the agendas is one of our high priorities. First in, first out is definitely one of what we call it sale day. Why, why would this item take so long? You know, so first in, first out is definitely one of our priorities. We also then balance the workload. So the fruit trees on municipal property is not as high a priority as some of the other tasks that we've chosen to tackle sooner from our perspective. Having said that, I do believe that it, it was important for administration to note in the third item that you did say the first meeting of April. And I do feel that that's a growth area for us. We, I will fully say I missed that. And so we can listen to that already given information. So I, I, as this relationship grows and builds and modifies as it goes, I do think this kind of conversation really helps us to understand what you are thinking we're doing. And we are mostly doing that. The fruit trees one is an interesting, it's not a linear path. As an example, it's not a thing that we sort of put off to the side. We worked on it. It came to an interesting place. We went to a different area. We worked on it a bit more. And so it's, yeah, not a linear path of A plus B went to C. And also, it's also the trees aren't the, the solution is not, you know, holding anything else up. And so with it being all by itself, it can then go to a different level of priority when other things are seen as higher priority. But this is absolutely a time where council can tell us if we're getting it right or wrong.
Thank you. Thank you, Acting CEO Reed. Any other com- any other comments around counselors? I appreciate the conversation and the interaction with administration and how council priorities and administration workloads need to mesh. And I think that was, again, a healthy discussion as we move forward as to what, what are realistic timelines and what are and why priorities are set for certain, for certain times. At this particular venture, I would recommend or suggest we keep the status for now on this motion action list. And we would go to taking items off the list that will be addressed today. And I believe we need a motion to do that. And we can review the, the addition of the status column and its benefits. and its benefits um as we work with this form. So I think CEO Reed, we just help me through this. We have addressed certain items today. One of them that probably could come off the list is the community of Bloom Committee. The seniors recreation pass. And I see we have so we have communities in Bloom here twice. And we're, okay, so we're taking one and leaving the one on the bottom, okay? Counselors, any other observations, comments? Your worship.
Apart from a council direction for a target date. The target dates are determined by administration. I might propose that under the status column, which I like. If if there is a suggestion for a different target date. The status simply indicate in progress proposed for for a different date. And then we can ask about, why is that proposed? It just, it it looks, and I read this, it it looks like it's done, like the target date has been changed. Um but if it's simply said proposed, then we know what to discuss.
Thank you. Thank you, your worship. Other comments? So with the motion action list, I believe we're looking for a motion to receive the amended motion action list for information.
Thank you Deputy Mayor Melnick. As Acting CEO Reed mentioned, we uh reviewed this as S L T, but um taking care of that document falls within legislative. So I can uh indicate what what works or what doesn't for us. Um so if any of the dates are to be changed on the target date, as uh Mayor Ireland pointed out, the information in the status is proposed. So unless council or committee in this case specifically includes in the motion, for example, on the clean energy program to change the target date to May, we can't change that ourselves. So so any, if if you are in support and agreement with any of the proposed dates on there, the status column, that needs to be part of a motion. And the motion is something like that council received the motion nationalist for information with the following amendments. And then change the date of item X to this month or that month, and then remove the communities and move my item from February twenty eighth, for example. Or so so the specific edits that council wants to see um to the motion action list have to be documented by motion. Or otherwise, it'll return to you in the same format as it was, if that's helpful.
That is, thank you.
Could it not just be, if 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 there was no issue with the proposed dates, I don't think they have to like itemize each each proposed date change. So if there was one that we were gonna pull out of there, it'd be just a, so we're not making an accurate edit.
Deputy Mayor Melnick through to Counselor Wilson. I I think that's a great idea. And um and the initial thought behind the status column was, for example, some of those items are for Director Mallochak or Director Greyhead, and they're not here right now. So instead of scrambling to find out when the new proposed date is, we just tried to input it in the status column. But yes, that would work as long as word in general enough to accept the proposed change in dates in the status column as presented or something like that.
Okay, with that additional clarity, we would need a motion to effectively say what we just talked about. Do I see a hand up on the screen? No.
It was originally up, but now I'm not as sure about how to make the motions of.
Thank you, Counselor Waxer, um your worship.
I was reading what you said, Counselor Melnick, uh Deputy Mayor Melnick.
I will make a motion. Yes, oh, I think it's on. The green light is on.
Okay.
I will make a motion that committee direct administration to revise the motion action list to eliminate the first item. To change the dates of items three and four from April to May. To eliminate item nine. And that's it. So there are four changes to come on and to the third and fourth ones on page one, change from April to May. Now, I think those are the only changes there. Have I missed one directly?
Uh if I may, Deputy Mayor Melnick, then then you are saying fruit trees on municipal pop um municipal property must come back in April.
I missed that one.
Cannot do that.
My fault that I I did miss that. So I can make friendly amendment to my own motion, eliminate number one. Change the dates on items two, three and four from April to May. And eliminate the first of the community in Bloom's one, which I think I said was number nine.
Thank you for that. Your worship, administration, that's clear. Are there any comments on the motion? There being none, we've lost Counselor Demona, there we are. I will call the question, all those in favor? And that's carried. And while we're on this, it was interesting how the mayor referred to each item by number. Do you know where this is going? Would it be helpful for administration and council if on the left-hand side, these are numbered? For us to make reference during the meeting um um for clarity?
Thank you Deputy Mayor Melnick. You should have witnessed the hilarity of me trying to edit this document live during S L T last week as we tried to come up with this. Um and we can certainly look at uh inserting numbers just from a formatting perspective. Adding columns is gonna start to become interesting and uh but we can certainly have a look. And I appreciate the the time and thought put into this process there. I'm already picking up other things that could be modified, but I think we just go along and work through it and work on the inputs from both sides and we'll we'll figure it out. So we'll have a look at putting numbers in.
Thank you for that. Appreciate it, Counselor Waxer.
I sorry, through you Deputy Ben Melnick to Director Nado. I'm wondering whether we would likely have something in ev- in that final column, something in every box. Um so I was thinking you you might say not yet commenced or um in progress or close to completion or something like that. Um that that's what I was thinking would be there, so I'm just curious.
Uh Director Nado.
Deputy Mayor Melnick through to Counselor Waxer, thank you for for those observations. Um we can certainly continue discussing at S L T this week. And also, um I'm sure CEO Given will have some some inputs and thoughts when he returns. This was just something that we did because we thought it was relevant and we try to be adaptable like that. But uh yeah, thanks for that input.
Great, thank you very much. Uh we have now come to item nine, counselor upcoming meetings. Counselor Wilson.
Marilyn and I have a West Yellowhead Regional Waste Management Authority meeting uh next. Monday at ten AM. That's the first meeting in mention. And I also have um Alberta Municipal Climate Leadership Council meeting, uh the second meeting um on April twentieth Thursday.
Thank you for that. Other counselors? I'll just add that I have a Gasprey only at historical society monthly meeting tonight. And I did have an opportunity over the last week to participate in two Zoom meetings as it relates to housing, one being Canadian uh C M H C Housing Accelerator Key Fund elements to understand how that performs. And also the Green Municipal Fund, that's an F C M initiative on sustainable, affordable housing. Both of which I think will help. Um in my understanding is um our housing corporation will will be set up in good work as well as how we'll be able to access certain funds.
Thank you Deputy Mayor. Tomorrow afternoon, I'll be attending the early childhood community conversation. And in the evening, our monthly library board meeting.
Thank you for that. Other counselors?
All right.
Well, I was just gonna say that uh Counselor Hall and I are participating in a uh in some Zoom lessons on land use and development approvals, which is put on by the uh E O E P, the uh Educated Education of elective officials program. Which I I find that um, you know, it's 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 pretty interesting so far. And then uh you and I Deputy Mayor are going to be in Grand Cash uh pretty soon here on the twentieth for uh uh Community Futures West Yellowhead. So that's gonna be our director's meeting um on Thursday, the twentieth.
Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Upcoming events, item ten. So again, after lunch, we'll have the legislative committee meeting. Uh as you see, the Jasper Pride Festival is uh kicking off. And I believe we have a flag racing at the fire hall this Friday at approximately twelve or twelve fifteen. Next week, we'll have our governal affairs meeting as well as regular council meeting on the Tuesday. That will be hosted by Jasper Pride at Public Georges. And uh we've added some new items here. For the discussion or the recycling industry waste reduction discussion. That was on before, but that'll be at the end of the month. We have emergency preparedness week was added from May seventh to thirteenth with an open house to be held from three to seven on May tenth at the Emergency Services Building. Um as we will reach May, Japan, Alberta, sorry, Alberta, Japan, communities, now these associations will meet here in Jasper on the fifteenth at the Forest Park Hotel. And our Fire Smart Day is Sunday, the fourteenth of May. And I do believe we have some fifteen um successful uh recipients of the five hundred dollars Fire Smart uh grant for community events. Moving on to the next item, which is in camera. Are there any other, any of the information that these uh counselors would like to bring up? Your worship.
Thank you Deputy Mayor Melnick, just two items. Just to confirm that at next week's regular council meeting the mayor's awards that council approved recently will be um part of the agenda. And um perhaps to the dismay of administration, I have once again agreed to deliver a state of the municipality address um the evening of May tenth um to the Chamber of Commerce staff, castations. But once again, I will undertake to do the work and give administration from that concern. Although I know last year they they put in a bunch of get the venue um set up inappropriately. And so I have committed, but that doesn't mean that anybody else has to do any work or all figure out it, but May, May tenth.
Thank you, your worship. So um that brings us now to item eleven, which we have changed to an in-camera session. And I believe that once we conclude that session, uh we will not be coming um back to do any other business other than to um adjourn the regular meeting. Uh I'd like to thank the public and uh individuals uh who have participated in uh this particular meeting. And with that, um we will not be returning to regular council uh other than to return. So I would be looking for a motion to move in camera, Counselor Demona. So we have a motion on the floor to move in camera at eleven forty-seven. All those in favor? Thank you. We are now in camera. So we're, we're going to be coming back to a separate email link to be able to um adjourn the meeting. So we will email that um to individuals uh so that um we can see the uh the end result of of the adjournment of the regular, of the committee at all.
Honestly, there has to be for the in-camera.
Oh, sorry, counselors, um Waxer and Demona, my apologies. We'll email you a link to join us in camera. Thank you, and we are now in camera.